What she had said and then what we had said.
I'd like to call to order the Village Board of Trustees for Monday, November 4th. It is 6:30. We have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted. We'll start with the Village Board.
The Village Board of Trustees and State of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a chorus, public appearances, public's opportunity to speak on any subject that is not a specific agenda item. We don't know if we have a specifically agenda item. So move on to item five is discuss and consider the regular board meeting minutes from October 21st and the budget workshop from October 28th. We'll take those separately or we can take them the same.
I need to approve both.
There was, I had just one correction on the vote to, for the budget to post it. Troy's vote of no would be recorded. So it's recorded right now, six zero one, but with Troy's note it would be six one zero.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion items, any corrections?
Was the motion of the amendment?
Yes. And then Sarah, you were seconding it as well?
Yes, I was seconding as well.
Any further discussion then? Having heard then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? You abstained? Most are curious. Item six is presentation to board. We have first Briar Patch Services.
I'm going to endorse Lou Starzoff. So since 2005 Briar Patch has had the opportunity to come here and present to members of the board with regards to our peer court program. We appreciate the support of the Village of Cottage Grove and the opportunity that we've had to be able to serve youth in a different way. Just to remind her that peer court is a voluntary alternative to the former municipal court process where youth are given a fine. They come through our peer court process. And for many years, we've operated under a peer court panel model where young people come in here, they sit at the tables that you guys are sitting at, much like you're sitting. And our young people who have given citations come, they sit in front of them and they're asked questions about what happened to bring them before our peer court panel. And that has been fine. It has worked well over the years, but as times change, we are adopting more of a restorative model to do the peer court based upon best practices, based upon the whole piece of what's going on with our young people and giving us a better opportunity to be able to serve them in a little bit different way. And so it's with that that I think you have, Lee gave you the copy of the draft of the...
Agreement.
Agreement? Is that true?
Yes.
So the only thing I just wanted to point out, I know he's already made these adjustments. So, and I'm going to turn it over to Sierra and to Sammy and to Claudia because they actually did some really good work related to peer court. But just to confirm that we are looking at renaming peer court, which it was in the agreement for new peer court, to Briar Patch Restorative Justice Program. I think that's a reflection of the overall fact that a lot of the youth that come before peer court are served in many of the ways throughout Briar Patch that's beyond peer court such as family counseling, our opportunity for employment, opportunity for counseling services and things like that. So I think that just better reflects that. So I would be supporting that. And then just another minor change, which I think Lee is going to make is where we have responded, just to make that change to call them a youth. There's three different instances of that under section A, two, B, four, six, and eight.
The other thing that we've, that I've done is assuming that the board approves this tonight, I've gone through and everywhere it talks about the youth court, I've changed the name to the Briar Patch Restorative Justice Program. Then there's also a explanatory paragraph in the whereas's which says, whereas effective the first of the year Briar Patch will be making the current youth peer court more encompassing and changing the name to Briar Patch Restorative Justice Program. So those changes are made in this. And if anybody wants a copy of this before you leave tonight, I'd be happy to give it to you. Otherwise, I'll be finalizing the contract and sending it over to Jade tomorrow.
And then the only other update is on section A, two B, which is in bold, which references traffic referrals and determining potential alternative dispositions to payment of forfeiture adjudicated with first offense traffic violations. Again, at your direction, we're absolutely not interested in handling traffic referrals. That isn't something that other peer courts have done. The research doesn't indicate that there's a benefit to that. And so again, that's something that we would need to talk with Judge Heffinger about, I believe in two weeks at our spirit committee meeting. But at the direction and the support from the board, we would be in favor of no longer hearing those traffic offenses.
This has been on issue and I know Chief Labor feels strongly about it. And it's been, I specifically asked Jade to address that this evening. And so the, assuming that the board approves this, the draft of the contract will indicate that traffic referrals would not be sent to peer court. And then we'll send that on to the peer court committee and to Judge Heffinger to get his input.
Oh, mostly you have questions?
Yeah. Isn't there another program for people that have traffic offenses like 18 and alive or something like that?
So I think that Farland uses, you researched this, right? Sierra, there's a, it's not necessarily a program, but there is a...
A class.
A class that Farland uses, which could be alternative. That's not something we run? I can't remember what it's called.
Oh, Safe Communities.
Safe Communities.
That must be another one. I know that there's another one that has a line.
Aliva twenty-five.
Yeah. So there's other resources that we can use for those types of things?
Most definitely.
So I don't know if you had any questions, but I wanted to have maybe Sammy and Sierra. And Sammy is our coordinator for all of the peer courts throughout Dade County. So she represents the Y, Time Bank, and Briar Patch. And then we have Claudia, who is our wonderful intern from Briar Patch, who is also a native of Cottage Grove as we speak, living here and along with myself. So if you have any questions or I'd like to turn it over to Sierra to talk a little bit about why this is a best practice model and we will take...
Is it okay if I talk a little bit?
Please.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much. Yeah, my name is Sierra Grove and I'm the program coordinator for the Briar Patch Restorative Justice Program, which we're now renaming at the first of the year. And this is Sammy Claussen-Rubert from the YWCA. And so I came into Briar Patch December of last year and new set of eyes to a program that had been a certain way for a pretty long time. So the first thing I wanted to do is kind of understand how does peer court work. I also wanted to get to know our community partners like the YWCA, the Dade County Time Bank, and get a full understanding of are we up to speed with best practice? Are we doing what's in the best interest of these children? And so I spent about the first four to five months really kind of diving in deep, being part of sessions, understanding the panel model, researching the history and how peer court came to be. And then also learning about other programs and how they operate, especially since we share this grant in the city of Madison. And that's where I learned about circle process. And that's where I learned more about restorative justice philosophy and understanding that we need to take whatever harms are committed and talk about how can we repair those harms so that they don't happen again? And how can we support young people and being part of the community and support them as we move forward? And so as much as it sounds like it may be extremely different, it's really not as different as you may think. Instead of being in a panel, kind of how we're situated like this with us being asked questions kind of like in a court process, we would sit in a circle and we would do several rounds with a talking piece so that everyone in the room gets to know each other. One of the things I noticed very quickly firsthand, and I have somewhat of a background in mental health, understanding trauma and foster care, and do have somewhat of a racial lens background. But I noticed a lot of kids shut down. And I noticed that there was a lot of things that we were missing because people didn't feel comfortable telling us. And with the transition to circle process, kids are a lot more comfortable, parents are a lot more comfortable. And we're able to learn more about children and families so that we can support them in moving forward better. And so through everything I was observing and kind of learning about circle process, also wanted to make sure that we're up to speed with best practices and going to be moving in the direction that's in the best interest of program and the community. Jade was lucky enough to get us money so that we could go to Denver, Colorado, to this National Restorative Justice Conference to learn from people all across the country that are transitioning programs from peer courts to restorative justice programs, implementing circle process, retiring peer court process. Not that that wasn't good for that time period. However, we're learning that there's ways that we can be more inclusive, we can be more supportive to different communities and realizing just how we can do a better job of getting to know the children that we're supposed to be supporting. I've had a lot of feedback from youth that have kind of been on the tail end of peer court sessions and then kind of transitioning into supporting with circle process. And I'm telling you guys, these kids after these sessions are just like, oh, I was so much better than before. And you know, I even came in this room nervous and the circle was weird, but it was really great to be heard. And to hear that kind of feedback just really, honestly, you guys, it really warms my soul a lot to hear these children and these families that feel like they've been harmed by certain systems, feel like they're heard, feel like they're validated, feel like they're supported and moving forward. We also have a volunteer that wasn't able to be here tonight, but she had some words that she wanted me to share. And she has been with us from the transition. And she said, I really believe this is a great program and necessary for the individuals it serves. I have learned much from the sessions, how different each person is, how differently they process and react to their situations, and how much they benefit from the guidance offered by the program. And so with these transitions, we're able to go from kind of, I mean, court-like approach that's more daunting. It brings people in kind of unnerved, like, oh my gosh, like, what's going to happen? Are they going to throw down the hammer at me? To more of a, let's take a step back. Like, what's going on at home? Like, how are you doing? What are your strengths? What are you good at? What have you done in this situation to repair the harm, if yet at all? How are things been going since then? What can we do to support you in different ways and different capacities to support your professional growth so that you can be more attached to this community so this doesn't happen again? And so these are all things that I'm very passionate about. These are changes that are supported by the YWCA and the Dade County Time Bank. And we have now all merged our processes to be aligned with best practice. And that's why we feel that this is the best, in the best interest of the community to go in this direction.
You've covered it all. All I would say is say I'm like someone named Sammy. I'm the outreach liaison on SOI. So I'm helping to support all of the organizations who are doing restorative justice. We're about to launch into countywide, real long evaluation on program and practices too, so we can give recommendations to municipalities and schools on how they could partner to utilize restorative justice in their work. And I just think Sierra also, you know, she mentioned the transition that Briar Patch is in, and it's a similar transition that Time Bank also just went through as well. They also were in the schools in Madison doing a peer court model. They too learned throughout the years about circle process and better ways to have these processes that feel more supportive and less punitive. And so we've had these similar conversations with lots of stakeholders and we've been doing the work in transitioning from peer court to circle model in a variety of spaces. And our goal really is to have a county-wide expansion on this work. So we're hoping that everyone can kind of get to this similar foundation of the work, that we can be using each other as resources to handle things. And that's so overall, then eventually that all of Dade County will have access to circle process for youth. So this is just kind of following the trend that a lot of us have been going on this journey for a while now.
Can we ask you, can we ask you some questions?
Yeah.
A couple of questions for you. Is it the circle, is it one kind of child at a time that comes and does their piece? Or if there are three kids, for example, that were referred to you, would those three kids all be in the same circle?
So it would be based, it would be one youth at a time, even if they were part of the same situation. We typically, unless it would be a situation where there were siblings involved in the same situation, where I could see them being together, which I've only done once, it would be just one individually, just so that they have the opportunity to be heard and have their space.
And how long does a circle last?
Typically, it can be anywhere. Traffic goes a lot quicker, I'll be honest. And that's one of the things where traffic's really weird to do. And we've consulted with other municipalities. And it's one of those things where it's kind of like, what are we doing here? But for other cases, typically a half hour, we block a half hour. Whereas peer court, we were typically only meeting with them for 15 minutes. So this is longer. I think that's also part of that accountability piece where we're really, I mean, we're going around doing rounds, talking about different situations. We're talking about the situation in and of itself and really asking that young person to divulge, like, what's going on and to share. And so we get a lot more in-depth than the peer court model thus.
Would you see yourself needing to increase the frequency that you're coming out here to accomplish this new model?
I do not believe so. I mean, we have two evenings a month allocated already and that has been working just fine. And with not doing traffic, that would give us more time to allocate more time and consideration to more serious situations if it was so desired.
Would the kids still have, you know, like follow-up assignments like we do right now?
Yes. The difference, I will say that there will be something that, just in all transparency, that I think is rather punitive, that we have taken away, is that historically, the program has made each agreement have three different things on it. And that's something where each situation that that community of folks in that circle encounter are completely different. We have situations where parents and the child in the situation, I mean, if a youth has stolen something, has been marched back into the store, has paid for whatever it was, was suspended from school, has had to explain to classmates what they did and why that was wrong, have done apology letters. And so we're honestly in a spot where, looking at restorative justice philosophy and principles, we're honoring the work that the community is doing, these children and families are doing on the front end to hold accountability for things, to where agreements look much more diverse. We still hold the accountability piece as something that needs to be addressed. And it's not something that is a one-size-fits-all for everyone because that's a disservice to the youth and the community.
So real quick, if a youth goes through a process, a circle, they make their amends through whatever means that they've been outlined, do you come back as a circle to kind of reconvene with the youth and say, you know, how's it going? Is there any kind of check-ins or?
We, our program specifically is at a place where we check in monthly, regularly. How are things going with your agreements? Is there support that would be helpful for you? Typically, assignments are turned in and they go on their merry way. So we don't end up meeting again. However, we can meet again if that's something that would be helpful.
And again, each situation's different. There may be circumstances where, you know, circle, get your stuff done, you're good, and you're back on the right path. And then there are other situations where they just need more, more time and more counseling and more support. Okay?
For the leaders and other kids that you have in the circle, how many people is it, I guess, with my, I'm trying to visualize. It's three, four, are we talking ten? And then how many of those people would be volunteer versus paid staff and training?
So it kind of all depends on the location and how many volunteers we currently have. I think in Cottage Grove right now, I've got two or three youths that consistently want to come and are coming. We have youth that want to participate in a circle or two after as part of their agreement to learn more about restorative justice and to give back that way to other youth, which is super powerful. And that's something that we're transitioning to. No, like, is that something you want to do? Because this process was helpful for you and you want to share that. We have an adult volunteer as well in Cottage Grove. And then Claudia comes each time and is supporting Cottage Grove. So typically, a circle here is like five to seven-ish total.
And do you find a difference between a smaller circle than maybe a larger circle?
You know, I do. And it honestly depends on the situation. There have been certain situations where there have been more sensitive cases where youth may not be comfortable with other youth, where we would just have adults participate, or maybe it would just be myself and the family. But when I talk about coming up with an agreement, that's a collaborative process. We honor youth's voice and choice, family's voice and choice and understanding. Is this something that's going to be achievable for this family? And that's looking at things like literacy levels. Is this something that the family is agreeing that would be helpful for them in moving forward? And so that's a collaborative process with whom others can help.
Other questions?
Just a comment. So hearing that we're one of, probably the only community that actually takes traffic violations over peer court, I'm totally supportive of our movement there. Just more curious about the language. I mean, would you say traffic referrals should not be made to peer court or is there a language that was specifically chosen?
Well, and also in looking at the language that's currently in there, it looks like we would still be taking that.
That's already as well.
That's where I think it needs to be omitted completely.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. If that's the direction of the board, we'd be happy to do that.
How many referrals do you think that will reduce?
Well, I mean...
Forty, forty, fifty right now. I don't want to say half, but...
Yeah.
A third, probably about a third.
I don't see the need to do them. There's other programs like safer communities, all of the same communities.
And you guys, are there similar sized communities too? And I looked at some of their reporting and I would say Cottage Grove really sticks out within like a six-month period of having a lot more than like a more size community. And most of it is traffic.
It's hard to say that if it's, you know, it's a moving violation, but in the midst of that, there might be possession of marijuana with at the back room be referred because that would be a separate ticket. That would be something that we would hear, but just not that would be a violation.
Do we need a motion to...
Yeah, it would be a motion to approve with the direction that...
A little later in the agenda.
Oh, it is?
Yes. But I like your enthusiasm. What do you think? Any other questions for Briar Patch? Thanks for coming out, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. Thank you so much.
Do you want me to take notes?
Sure.
I'd mess it up. All right. So next we have a presentation from Village Court Lisa on the redesign of the website.
Okay. So you had a memo in your packet. In 2016, we launched our new website. And with that, we had in the contract that after 48 months of continuous service, we get a redesign. So we're at that process. So we're looking at February of 2020, we are going to be working on the redesign of our website. So I just wanted to show you quickly a couple of different websites that Civic Plus has put out there with the updates. You'll notice that in these, it's more of how do I is kind of like the front part of the page instead of like government, election, different areas, departments and all of that. And it's more driven on how, if you look at a mobile app, how you scroll down instead of like across. So I think this is going to be a great enhancement so there's not so many clicks to find information. And I think our information should be like the forefront because we will be looking at our analyticals of our website to see where people are clicking, how long they're staying on the site and what areas that they want. So just kind of give you a little intel what's happening with it and what it could possibly look like. So I'll go into this one. And again, this is, take a minute here for it to load. If I scroll down here a little bit, you'll see instead of how our sticky bar is to the left of our screen, now this kind of is in the middle. And I think it's a little bit more user friendly of getting right to maybe the categories, wants to go through our analyticals of what we want on that portion of it, of what is the most useful portion of our website. The other thing that I liked about this one is it had this big huge portion of news. So we could put some features that are happening within the village up there to kind of highlight what's happening. Some people are, you know, aware. And then the other thing that I liked about this one, when you go down, maybe the other one, the calendar, you can also have like your Facebook feed right there. So that's more forefront. We did do a survey not too long ago about what avenues that you use to get information. And surprisingly, it was our website that people go to mostly. So I mean, that was nice to hear. So I think with the redesign, we can enhance that maybe a little bit more. Up where we're going. This is another one that has a lot of those same types of features. It's more of that scrolling down feature, which I think will make our website a more mobile device friendly as well. This one's kind of nice because the pictures scroll through. And Erin had a photographer for CBA, which has some wonderful pictures, which we'll be using to enhance it as well. So, oops, got a little bit too far. Again, this is, you know, how, how can I? And this is giving more detail, I think, of where people are going with the website. So anybody have any questions, Beth?
I have. Do we get to like pick and choose? Like, or do they have their set websites that we get to choose from?
No. So with this, we're, we are going with the ultimate because we can do that with that contract. So why not go for the ultimate? Because it gives us more options of what we can do and we can customize it to our community. So that's what we'll be doing. We have a team of six people set up that will be working on this. Right now, we've been working on our current material on our website and cleaning it up, making sure all of our links work. We just picked some of our favorite photos. We'll be meeting collaboratively to come up with some of the best ones. We'll have a lot of opportunities to obviously put them in different places as well for like parks. We can highlight our parks because we've got some really great photos. So we'll be doing all that. But yeah, we'll have a great say of how we want. It's not just a cookie cutter.
Okay. And the other question I had was, who's on the team?
Oh, so the team is Erin, Sarah, Haltel height in our office, Kristen, Brooke, Sam, and myself. So...
Oh, our users.
Yeah. And that was part of it because on the backside of this, people that worked here in 2016, if they would like to do some training on how to put things on the website or do that type of thing, it kind of comes along with that. So, great.
Lisa, does this example have the Facebook feed?
It may. Let me go down. Yeah. Oh, nope, that other one does. Let me go back now. Nope, the other one does. Let me go back, Matt. There were a lot to pick and I thought, I don't want to inundate you. I've had a lot of different things that I have flagged on different sites that I think are... Right there's the Facebook feed.
It's amazing. We'll have to, just a couple of years. Our website that I think we all thought was great and is, and is great, certainly from where it was before. But when it was new, it looks new and a couple of years later, it's looking outdated.
Yeah, I think on Sean's page on parks, they have their Facebook page feed on the side, but it's on the side where this is kind of like front and center, it's on your front page, which I think is useful. You don't have to click and go in. Because that's some of the feedback I have heard is that you have to click or you have to go in so far to find what you're looking for. So hopefully this will help with that.
And do we have the ability to say change pictures of something new comes to the community? We've got a better photo of something?
Absolutely. I didn't pick it in one of these, on one of these two examples, but there was one example and it's not on their front page. It's down a little bit further. But it's where their pictures scroll. So you can have several pictures that would scroll and we can change those at any time. So yeah, we do have that capability.
We have the ultimate.
Because we have the ultimate.
Yeah, I think it's a, obviously a no brainer. It's part of the contract to upgrade it. I do foresee using the Public Relations Committee at all now that that's up and running again to maybe get some ideas from them.
We can certainly do that when we get further into it. This is a little bit premature because we can't start working on it until February.
So that's when we start? It's not going to be fully implemented?
Right, no, it won't be fully implemented until like six or eight months after February. So it'll be towards the end of the next year before it's even launched. Because there's a lot of work that goes into it. Not just simply switching and copying and pasting things over, unfortunately. So. Any other questions?
Do we have the opportunity, you know, as they get further along to do like a beta check or whatever, where someone can go in with their handheld and just, just try it out as it gets formed or...
I think that that's probably all part of their process. And I think that's part of the update already as far as what they have done, you know, with the new technology. But definitely can find, you know, out more about that when we get into it. And we'll also be, you know, periodically bringing back some information to you all as it proceeds. So we can keep you in the loop of what's happening and where we're at and some of maybe the cool new features with our ultimate choice.
Alright, any other questions for Lisa? Alright, thanks Lisa.
Did you get all those minutes?
I did. They're all up here.
Okay.
I'll tell you them later. Alright, so then we move on to unfinished business. Discuss and consider the contract for services for the Colonial Club. This was a night that was tabled on the 21st of October at the Village Board trustee meeting. So I'd need, first of all, a motion to take it off the table and then we'll go from there.
A motion that would take it off, take off the table or discussion of Colonial Club.
Alright, is there a second?
A second.
Any, any other discussion? Otherwise, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Now we can talk about it.
In your packet was a memo on Colonial Club as well. And the main changes that I made to the contract, you may recall that Melody Riedel or Riddle handed me a sheet of paper with their suggested language changes. And so what I've done is gone through and under obligations of Colonial Club on page one, two and three, I have typed in their requested language and what they want to do. And it's underlined and then the language that was in the contract is in italics. So that's really the major, the major change along with the fact that they ask for more money.
So is the suggestion that the underlying language replace the language in italics?
I don't have an issue with doing that because it reflects what they're actually doing. And I think that's, there's always been a bit of a gap between what they're doing and what we thought that they were doing. Not, not in a, in a bad way. It was just that we didn't really realize the services. And so I, at some point said, well, okay, then you tell us what you're doing and we'll make that a part of the contract.
Yeah, because I think our discussion was to take out the specific, like number of meals and miles and things like that. Was the three percent, we, their language, like increase meals provided by three percent? Increase transportation by three percent?
If it's underlined, yes, yes.
Could we say by at least three percent so we don't have to be capped at growing by three percent?
Sure.
By an average?
By an average.
Well, okay.
Yeah, be careful.
I just want to add, add this. Somebody has to monitor that. And somebody has to sit down and go, well, let's see. So I, I'd like to make it as clean as possible, which is maybe, I like the idea of at least three percent. I'm sure they're not going to have a problem with that. The more complicated you make it, the more difficult it is to enforce.
It's interesting that that was their numbers.
Yeah.
Because it's a number. I have to try to figure out. But I guess maybe they feel comfortable with that considering their service has increased over the years.
And I would assume that they report out then when they come and chat with us on an annual basis, just walking through those like they've done the last several years now.
Having the, having the language in there about the services they're provided is relatively maybe the last two or three years simply because it was, well, they're, we're going to provide services. Well, what were those? That was the, that was the question. So I'm sure that we can modify the language to make it not a hard and fast number, but a, you know, up to three percent or whatever, whatever it is. I don't think, I don't think they'll have any, any big issue with that.
I would be okay leaving it at three percent if that was their, their suggestion. I'm wondering if we could add into one of these bullets that they would provide us with an annual report for numbers specific to Cottage Grove?
I thought it was in there.
Is it in there? I was just quickly reviewing.
I thought it was.
Yeah, I thought so.
Just as long as it isn't.
Well, could we make number 11, number six, since six is crossed off?
No. Sure.
It's meaningless.
It's fine.
So your numbers match up at the end?
Yeah, okay.
Just trying to make it easier for you.
Yeah, and by changing it, it does. Okay, so make sure that the language...
Includes an annual.
Includes the annual report, yeah. I'm pretty sure it's in there, but I'll see if I can find it. Alright.
So this is good for one year then?
Great, that's the way... That's what we've done with Colonial Club and with Briar Patch. There's no magic to that except that in the past, boards have said, well, that gives us a chance to review these programs because we don't really have any direct input into them necessarily. But that's totally up to the board.
I think one year makes sense since it has value in it.
Yeah. No, you can adjust each year. Is there a motion then to accept this with the edits proposed?
So I'll make a motion to approve the contract with, between the village and Colonial Club as drafted by Lee with the revisions of the pieces in italics would be removed and just the underlined pieces would remain. And that we just ensure somewhere in here that it includes an annual report out on Cottage Grove's specific recipients.
Okay.
Motion second. With the, is there any further discussion? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Name of the stain? Motion carries. Item seven, B, then discuss position description for the emergency management director. Matt provided this in there.
Yes, during the last meeting, there was direction to put together a draft job position description for, for this. And just a couple of things to touch base on for the village's purposes. Police department was the most rational department for, that I felt to put it under. It's, this isn't assigned to anyone, so, you know, I think we'd see if anyone wanted to apply either internally or in, you know, in the greater community, provided they meet the requirements of the position. And as far as supervision, if, if it ends up being an officer, for instance, within the department, then we'd probably change that to have the direct report be the police chief. And then going down on the second page, education and experience. This was just a, a review of communities our size and the type of experience that you generally see. So it's usually somewhere around five years of experience in public safety, ideally in, with municipal experience. But we also have the comment at the end of that section, which gives us the flexibility is, you know, any, any combination of experience or education that we, we think would be suitable is fine too. So it kind of starts off as more as, this would be our ideal candidate, but it opens the door for other options for us if we don't have the ideal candidate. That's all I have.
Essential duties, just to look at essentials for a second. Need some spelling help.
Oh, yep.
And I would just say the third bullet point is kind of a vague ask to be on call at all times. And so maybe...
That's why I was, I was like quotes.
Yeah. Maybe some sort of like plan and on-call-at-all-times for some emergencies or backup plan.
Right.
Implemented or something.
I mean technically, the, the chief and myself are on-call-at-all-times. That's part of just how it, how it is. But if you're, if you're away, you have a second in charge or someone, so.
Yeah, you have something set up.
Yep.
Maybe I overlooked it, but is there any requirements for them to live within a certain distance of the village to make sure that they're available? If having someone that lives an hour away...
Right.
Really helps and...
No, but that's a good suggestion.
Is that something that can be a requirement?
Yes.
Can be for this.
Mm-hmm, for any kind of, any positions that need to respond to emergency. Do you know what's in, do you remember chief, what's in the union contract for officers?
It's, I think it's about a half hour. It's generally what it is for police.
We just ran into the issue with the EMS chief. That's why. So what do we do with this next, Matt?
You can make those changes and bring it back again, or you could approve it with, you know, having the thirty minutes. And was there anything? Was there anything else besides typo?
Do we need to make a decision on whether the town needs to sign off or what their involvement with this is?
This would be a village position?
Yeah, no, I know.
I think that comes along when we get the plan together. We have to re-engage and let them look at our plan, which is dictated by whoever is in this role. Kind of director. And then figure out next steps.
Okay.
It's not a secret. You can certainly share with the town, but... This is what we're looking for. Because maybe something's out for us.
I thought I saw on one of their agendas that they had discussed who their emergency management director would be. But I'm not positive on that one.
No, Lee, I can, we can send this over to Kim or whatever. I think it's, yeah, it's probably in the public.
Well, I mean, we've notified them that we're, that we're proceeding ourselves and this is another step in that direction. It's just at some point, I think, I think we're going to have to address the, the issue of their, they have a joint committee right now.
We've, yeah, we've stopped having the committee meetings and put those positions in place.
Alright.
Do we need to talk about salary at this point or is that a kind of later in line? For some sort of reimbursement if it's a current employee?
I think I saw five thousand dollars in the budget.
It's in the budget, yeah.
Okay, that's a start. So the next steps would really be finalize this and we post it on our website as far as if there's interest in community, greater community. We don't know what kind of qualifications are out there going to have. You know, someone that's perfect for this, that lives in the community, wants to do it. Has a passion for it, I don't know. That would be a good first step just to see. And then we may have our internal, you know, interests as well.
Right.
It seems reasonable, I think, to keep, keep moving along. And then in the meantime, once this is finalized, this is sent to the town, the same way.
So I can make a motion then to approve the job description with the...
Discuss.
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 Well, that's okay. What's the question?
Right now, we have just discussed position description.
I mean, anything on the agenda can be approved greatly.
Yeah, that's what we say at the end.
Yes.
In the fine print.
Okay, so a move to approve the job description with the typo changes and just that the position be posted for applicants?
I think we'll add the same distance requirement that's in, that's in the police union contract.
I'll second.
Motion second then. Any further discussion? Having heard that then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Name of the stain? Motion carries. Alright, item seven, C, then is discuss plans for a public event on lighting the water tower. Some of the kind of light on holiday tree or something like that. Just in case.
It is gonna do.
Do you need a light?
As most of you are aware, that's been an ongoing project now. Started in utility commission, came to board a year and a half or so. Especially just reached out for thoughts and utility commission chair Rogers recommended that we make it as big of an event as possible involving all collecting officials and committee members and the public. Recommended finding somewhere in the Commerce Park. And I just wanted to give the board an opportunity to opine on that idea. And he actually suggested November 20th at 7:00 PM. That works for everyone or there's no other big changes? I think we could probably figure out the details between...
Does November 20th have any historical significance for the village?
Sure we can find something.
That's a good, that's a good way to look at it, yeah.
Is there anything you would need from us beyond just attending?
Don't think so.
Cheering.
Cheering.
Are there, are there any specific businesses in the Commerce Park that...
I have one thought myself and I have to make sure to be available and have the visibility. I was thinking, I can do some homework on that.
Forever at that night.
I think that's reasonable then. Anybody have any concerns or questions?
I like your staff recommendation. Yes. Straight to the point.
Yes. Alright, we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Do some work on that history thing.
Alright, then we move on to new business and discuss and consider operative permit application licensing of July. application licensing of July 2019 through June 2020. Ariana Rodriguez, I think, sound pronouncing.
I make a motion to approve the operator license permit application for licensing here in July 2019 to June 2020. Ariana Rodriguez.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? Ariana, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We abstain, motion carries then. Item eight B then is discuss and consider 2020 contract for services for the Briar Patch Youth Services, we now have known as the Briar Patch Restorative Justice Program.
Okay, well, we've kind of gone through this with their presentation. We'll make the revisions to the contract and, and get that out to them tomorrow unless the board has any other revisions that they want to make.
I want an Article three letter A, right?
Two.
That's right, yeah, that's right.
Two A, right?
Yeah. Okay, three A, it's just the, for the year, it should say 2020.
Yeah, I've already made, yeah, I've already made that.
Oh, I see.
And make a motion that we approve the contract of Briar Patch with the changes that were underlined about the removal of the traffic and the correction of the typo. I'm just checking, you guys also want to, we want to sub in youth in some of that as well, I think.
Yeah, instead of respondent.
Yeah.
We're going to put youth.
Yep. So that, is that okay?
Yeah.
So, so we aren't putting traffic referrals in there at all, we're being, like, we're taking off a lot?
Not, not with this, not with the motion of the board, no.
Say it again, I said with the removal of traffic.
Yes.
Yeah, so the board, I mean, that's the direction, is that that language be taken out and that number, whatever becomes under six.
The language taken out and then replaced with traffic referrals shall not be referred to.
Yeah, I said no, in my motion, I said taken out, no, no traffic.
So, no traffic referrals to restorative justice.
But we want the contract to say no traffic.
That's exactly right, yes.
Okay.
That, that's how I read it.
No, I, I missed, wanted to make sure I heard it correct. Does that make sense, Lee?
If you guys say so, yeah. No, it's fine.
So it'll say no traffic referrals?
Right.
In the contract?
In the contract, right.
Okay.
All right.
Because we don't want that to break to us.
Any other discussion then? Have you heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We abstain, motion carries. All right, item eight C is discuss and consider forming a library planning commission. There was a memo included for Melissa in here as well, for this, pack it.
I'll make a motion to table. I'd like to see a little bit of background information from the staff on this, because it's been, there's been an attempt in the past to do this, it's not on the priority list either.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Okay, motion second then, any further discussion? Have you heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Anybody abstain? Motion is denied, okay, then it is still up for discussion then.
Do you want to come?
Yeah, did Ann want to speak, or does provide these to?
Oh, yeah, we've got public comments, you know, I didn't want to start with a memo or what, but we can start with the, the public. So first up is Ashley Hyman, she's a Cottage Grove resident, and she's in favor, and she's the one dropped off.
The dropped off.
So she will not be speaking, but she, according to hers. Next one up is Larry Schinemann, in favor of the library planning commission, or committee, I should say, and would like to speak, but is, but is here. Next one is Ann Schinemann, and she is a resident and in favor and would like to speak. Ann?
I fell asleep.
Oh, geez.
Better sit down fast.
And.
Ann, I've got a release to sign after.
Document two, within our, that was passed along.
Lee, you want me to sign or leave?
I didn't want you tripping in front of us.
No, no.
To me.
It wasn't boring. Good evening, everyone, I'm Ann Schinemann. I live at 205 Yarmulke Drive. I've been living here in the village since 1996. I'm speaking in favor of forming a library planning committee. Tonight, you can make another positive step in moving our village from a bedroom community to a thriving, inviting place for residents, travelers, shoppers, and visitors. A local library provides digital and hands-on resources to people of all ages, and it's a public site that ensures access to all. It's a place for meetings, social gatherings, research, learning opportunities. Residents and visitors can come to check their email, help, get help with their homework, look for job possibilities, read a newspaper or magazine, search through local historic documents, check out materials. The library can offer classes, speakers for toddlers, teens, families, and adults. The library planning committee will research current information as directed by the state statutes and the county standards for forming a library, will work very closely with the Dade County Library Services and the South Central Library Services. Will be looking for information for you about the costs of building a library and running a library, as well as collecting village resident surveys and face-to-face conversations with people about how they feel about having a library in our community. We want to educate people so they understand what the information means and what it would mean for our community. The committee will not have a budget, so the friends will be supplying any needed materials that they may need, the friends of the library. Once the research is done and a letter to DPI is approved, the library planning committee reports back to the village board, consider appointing a library board. I've been a member of the Friends of the Cottage Grove Library Incorporated since 1998. I'm the current president of this nonprofit organization, and I welcome any contact with me, questions, comments that you have, or anyone in the public. Our group owns the library land, and it's a Westwood Middle School. We manage a capital campaign fund, and we store the library documents that Diane Wiedenbeck put together as the library director, board director, which happened during the mid 2000s. We are ready to start the village library journey again. Please vote yes for the library planning committee. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ann. We had an email from a former resident, Cindy Haas, and she moved to Cambridge and just indicated her support for a library. So I wanted to pass that along, that's in, in there as well. Cynthia Clem Nelson, who's a resident and in favor, Cynthia, do you, are you here and do you want to speak? Do you want to speak, or?
I don't want to speak, I'm on the.
Don't want to put you on the spot if you don't want to, but.
I was actually going to email all of you, but in time, you're waiting for me today. 11th Forest Drive, I've been a resident here since 2012. One of the reasons we moved to Cottage Grove was because of the size of the community, the great public school system, we have two little girls now that are moving into the school system, I'm a kindergartner. And I think that a library is something that this community is definitely missing. I think I represent that 30-something family of four, and it's something that I know a lot of my friends and my neighbors are looking for in this community. And so I would encourage you to vote yes, which for the formation, at least taking that first step forward to putting a committee together and then hopefully bringing an actual library. And I think that the bookmobile is a temporary resource, the community just can't withstand something that's small, and something that we really need to move forward.
Next, Cynthia? Questions, discussion from the board then?
So, I brought this to the board, if you read my memo, it's, well, I call it a library planning committee, it can be called something else, it's more of a public outreach to listen to our residents, to find out what they want our community to be and where we're going to go in the future. The splash pad is a great step forward and something that I've heard from residents that they really want. And I've heard residents say that they want a library as well. And I know it was controversial in the past, but that was 10 years ago, and our community has changed since then, and so we need to hear from our new residents as well to see what they want for our community. So while, while this, while if this committee does get formed, they may be looking at a library, they might find out that our community doesn't want that. Maybe our community wants a community center, or we want a pool to go with the splash pad. I don't know, but I think it's important that there's some, some committee that's actually talking to our residents and, because we don't always have people come to our meetings here, so we aren't able to hear from them, but this committee can reach out better than our board can. So that's why I'm in favor of this and put it on the agenda tonight.
I'm in favor of it because I was, I was taken back. I mean, I, I really didn't really understand the depth of, of that topic until I actually started knocking on doors during the campaign, and I heard from a lot of residents, not just a few, a lot, that that was a disappointment to them, that it didn't come through and that they wanted it, and they felt it was time, and as the community grew, and as it's growing and new, new neighborhoods are coming and stuff, it's, it's a central point that they're, that we're missing at this stage, so I definitely support it.
I have a special point too, I mean, it's, it's basically going to do all the legwork from what I understand, speaking with Ann as well as reading Melissa's memo, and it comes at zero cost to us, and there's no budget, until at a time in the future when information's presented to the board, then we have a decision to make. So it's really costing us nothing to do what Melissa said, really pull the residents and get some feedback, and it might be a library, it might be a community center, it might be a pool, it might be all of the things that are already discussed, and it really comes at, at no cost to the village, like we asked, it's the kind of true.
Should this committee actually be called something else, other than the library planning committee? Future amenities, or, I mean, to me, then, then you're talking about more than just a library, then if you're talking about whatever else might be a community center, whatever, community center and library tend to go together, but a pool is quite different than that, or something else, so is that really, is it more an outreach committee or?
I, I think it was, it's intended to be a committee that investigates whether it's feasible for a library, and like, like Melissa said, that it might come back that, no, it's not. Then we look at, okay, what's the next step, and maybe that, that committee is reformed as something different. I think right now, they just want to keep it as.
Good.
I think there's so much that this committee will do, and looking at the statutes, and making sure that we're following all of the rules specific to a library at the same time as doing outreach, so that when they do have an answer, they've done that work, so I think it makes sense to call it a library planning committee, and then if in the end it's not a library, then a different committee's formed to figure out whatever that uses.
Yes, I agree with that. So like, along the way, if you get feedback that community center would be great, or like, that, that's kind of recorded information in addition to, so.
Mm-hmm.
Just like, to historically keep it, like, we found out this, but also this, this, that makes sense to kind of direct a future committee and the one that's born.
Yeah. As a result. Right, and a, being a village committee, they would report their findings to us, so, I mean, so the Friends group could just have their own committee, and we wouldn't know any information at all.
Are you going to give it some direction, some parameters?
Did, they, was there a previous library committee?
There was, there was.
Or like some other type of?
There was a, there was a previous, well, I mean, the village actually had a library board.
Right.
And then that was dissolved in 2009. Generally, if you're going to create a committee, then you want to make sure you give some direction as to where you want it to go, what you want it to do.
And is that something that we could direct staff to? Can I talk? Do you have some suggestions?
So this is from the Department of Public Instruction. If the village wants to form a library planning committee, that would answer Lee's question, and it was bolded and highlighted in Melissa's memo, and the name would be a library planning committee, and the work that needs to be done is in this document, so it's all very clearly laid out. It's, it's, it's not part of the overall look at, do we want a pool or community center, it looks specifically at the wants and needs of the community towards a library, and it also lists the things that have to be laid out as far as the data that you would get about building and the operating budget.
I, I see, I bring that up just because once, if, if you don't keep it somewhat narrow in terms of what it's going to do, sometimes that can all get lost, and there's just, we're looking at all these things.
Right.
So I think that that's a valuable resource that Ann's giving you in terms of some direction to the actual library board.
So the direction it would give, it would affect the requirements of the DPI.
Do you have a sense of timeline, Ann, or Melissa, or anybody, on like, when the village board might expect an initial report back?
The previous ad hoc library committee was working for about nine months, and then they presented to the board. In the meantime, though, someone from the village board would be a part of this committee to report back monthly, just to let you know what we've met, and let you know what's going on, and might have questions for you, or you might have questions for us. So it should be a two-way street.
Okay.
Sorry, Melissa.
Sorry, Melissa. No, that's what I was thinking, nine to 12 months is a good timeframe to, to be able to, for the planning committee to meet and meet with committee, or community members, and do surveys and questionnaires and whatever type of outreach is determined.
Well, might be four bullet points from your memo, the community, find out if there's community support for a library, and then the costs of the building, and then staffing levels, operating costs, I mean, those are all, that's all the type of information we'd want to know before moving forward, I think. And it, when MSA was here talking about the facility study, I mean, it sounded like other places have done something kind of like that to see what's needed in their community, rather than paying them to do a $7,000 facility study on that, and this group would do all the work, and gather all this information for us.
I guess trustee Russell brings up an interesting point in that, you know, some folks may be more interested in a community center, some folks may be more interested in a pool, two things that he mentioned, or.
things that he mentioned, or a library. Should it be a broader, should it be a committee to look at the community, the village first, and then narrow it down to a, if it's the library that people want, or if it's a pool, if it's a community center? Now we're only focusing on one thing, where we could be focusing much broader to see what the majority of the citizens want.
Well, I guess to that I would say, I think that we should do a library planning committee because that's what I've heard the most people say that they want is a library. I haven't heard, I've heard people bring up a pool, but when I say we're getting a splash pad, then that is exciting to them. A community center, a library can have that in. So I think that if we start with a library planning committee and we gauge the reaction from the community, if it's still the way it was 10 years ago, we'll learn that quick enough. And then, then the committee can dissolve and there's no harm, no foul, but we've actually talked to our residents and heard more.
And I think specifically about a library, I feel like we've danced around that word. I've only lived two or six years and I feel like it's a cursed word when I bring it up sometimes and people look at me for various reasons. And I think we just need to, you know, talk about a library and where are your, where are we standing with the library? And if there are some other pieces, like Melissa said, it'll come out. But I think we need to own the fact and make sure that we, our residents realize, we don't have a library. That is like, in my opinion, such a foundational piece of a village. And I've lived in villages of 2,000 people and they have a library. So I think it's just important that we call it a library planning commission and talk about it that way.
You just have to give him your sheet if you want to speak.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Do you have a sheet filled out?
We have a sheet.
I've had people ask me why there's a sign after 12 years of a referendum.
Exactly. So we need to talk about it and ask them those.
The sign should probably come down until we decide to even build a library.
Well, it's, like, it's land.
Yeah. We don't really have anything to say about it. False advertising. Future Cottage Grove Library says right there on it.
So we, we might not make it be false advertising then. I mean, it's their land, it's, it's a possibility because it's been there forever.
Complies with the sign or нет?
I don't really wanna be known as a place that someone's excited to move to because there's a library and then we fall short of that and not have those amenities. Like that, that seems like kind of sad, false advertising, I guess.
Oh, so you mean?
Like, I really wanna be known for that.
Oh, take it down, do you?
No, I, I think we should find out if there's support for it in our community. And people have moved here and said, oh, so when is the library going to come? Because they think that there's going to be one and now the sign's been there for a long time. So I think that there are people that wish it would come through. So I would like to hear from them or people that don't want a library, you know, I would like to find out. And if we make the committee too broad, I don't know if we would find out the level of detail that we need to make the decisions, you know, with the operating costs and following state statutes and if we don't give it the direction of a library planning committee, that maybe it would be too broad and we wouldn't have enough information to make the decisions.
Okay. So this wasn't in our priority list, it is not in our five-year plan. So that'll be also something we really have to talk about when the numbers do come in because I looked at a few budgets from around the community, North Dean County, and fairly high, I mean, way high, what taxpayers are putting in, so.
To build it or operate it?
Just operating. So that's not the debt you take on for building a building.
We also understand, we put in 255,000 of our taxpayers' money each year for the bookmobile and card usage, et cetera. And say the operating comes in 50 to $100,000 more, is that worth it?
It's well above that. It's 350 plus.
I feel like we should debate that when we hear back from the committee.
Right.
What the numbers are, what the level of interest is, and then we can have a more robust conversation, realizing that yes, it's not in the five-year plan, that it might take us five years even to.
Well, I don't wanna have people think that if we're forming this committee, that in two years' time you're gonna have that because of realities of our financial structure right now, what we, what this group is committed to is significant, whether it's bus road or additional utilities that we have to put in, et cetera. So I don't want people to get excited saying, oh, in two or three years, because it may be five years. It may be six or seven years when the kids come home. Or maybe the committee wants it so bad, we'll have a referendum to go over our operating level. And that maybe to.
But we won't know that until this committee's.
Until we do that.
And it was kind of in the board's priorities because, as part of the parks and recs and open space amenities because I had it. My, my priority was listed under that and that was like the second thing on our list, so.
So I would make a motion to form a library, library planning committee that would follow the DPI structure of what research they would be doing and that we would.
Can you hold that up? We have one speaker.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Didn't know that.
Ivory Ross?
Yes.
Sorry.
I didn't plan to come and speak tonight, but I'm interested in this topic on the library.
Okay.
My family have been residents here in Cottage Grove for 21 years. We've seen the library come forward in the past and it hasn't gone anywhere. I think that I'm for the library. We are for the library. We'd like to see the library because I believe that a library provides more than just a place for books. It provides an opportunity for those who may not have access to services in their homes. Not all families have broadband connections and therefore if we wanna grow a community and we wanna make our children smarter, get them more connected to the world, the library provides that. It also provides an opportunity for people to gather and I think it's important. And we wanna build an inclusive community and libraries allow for, for people to be inclusive within the library system itself. Also, when we talk about libraries over the past decade, technology has grown by leaps and bounds. So when you say library, people think of the library as a vault. You have to really define what a library is and what it offers and how it brings people together and how it brings the world into our community. We live in a small community, but I moved in, we're 1,800 people. It has since grown by leaps and bounds and the diversity of our community has also changed. And with that change in diversity, not all families have access to what we consider basic resources. So in order to give those kids in our community an opportunity to grow and to include, the library would provide an opportunity for people to gather and to have access to technology that they may not have in their homes. It also just builds smarter kids, builds smarter people, gives them access to the world. So the generation of people 10 years ago, they may have moved on, moved out, or passed on. But today, when we moved here, the people around us were our age. Now I'm surrounded by children. And to be in a community that's fostering and flourishing like we are and not have a library, I live in a tragedy. We have to look at our future, we have to look at our children, we have to look at being inclusive. And libraries bring all that together. That's my take on it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Is there any?
No, we don't have more shirts.
It's going on a long-winded motion.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I will move that we form a library planning committee to follow the DPI bullet points, regulations in that document. And I'll kind of go with what Melissa has in her memo around having five members and it looks like one needs to be a school district superintendent or appointee and having one trustee, one member of the friends of the library, and then two additional members, one of which can be a member that is not a village resident.
Can I ask a question? Why would we want someone that's not a village resident to be a member of a committee about building a facility or exploring a facility in our village?
They might bring expertise on how to outreach, how to talk, how they've formed a library in the past.
And we're smart if I had a town in Cottage Grove.
Be a town member who will also be using the facilities, be fair to them.
You know, the library can only be owned by one community and I would hope that that committee would be, have as many citizens from the village on it as possible and not include people from outside that are gonna contribute to paying for it.
Is this flexibility?
But it can be. I mean, it's something that has to be.
Yeah, no, I think it's more about flexibility in case there's somebody that does provide expertise.
And that's, and that's what the state statutes recommend for a library board. So that's just planning for the future. If it did turn into a library board, that those would be the members.
I second.
Okay. Thank you. Just waiting for that. All right. Any further discussion then? Having heard them, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Lee Epstein? Motion carries. We have votes from village and boards and commissions base, joint fire. And under this, we have discussed and considered the fire department's funding request for a new brush truck. And as committee members under, wanna kind of, kinda like how the committee thought about this?
Oh, yes, sorry. So, okay, we'll start with that. We.
Or do you wanna summarize the committee first and then go to this discussions and consider, because it might be.
All right. So we went with the, well, I guess.
We already, we already kinda discussed.
Yeah. Yeah, we already did the committee.
Yeah.
We're just doing the brush truck.
Yeah.
Because it was from September 23rd. Okay, I was having a little vacation.
Yeah.
Okay.
To summarize, I mean, the committee recommended, and it wasn't a unanimous vote, but authorizing the fire department to spend up to, not to exceed $125,000 out of brush trucks. We talked about maybe renaming it brush truck to incident command vehicle or, and once you start renaming it, there's added requirements for that. So decided to go back to the brush truck. Of the 125,000, 100,000 were covered by the other Springs tractor. And then so the town and the village have split the remaining 25,000, so 1,500 of them from each municipality. And the vehicle, I think, is 22 years old. There might be some resale value to some other departments, which would offset the costs. So I think this is probably on here to get the board's consideration for the $14,500.
And we didn't have that in our capital expenditure rate. Matt, I didn't see.
Correct.
And the, the proposal is for 145,000.
Right.
Yeah. The estimate came at 145,000, I believe.
So it'd be even more than 12,500 that we would need to put in?
Was the chief gonna give a presentation?
No. So.
So I got a request for a memo from this board about some questions that you guys had about what, what the need would be for a brush truck, I mean, so you guys are the village. Basically, the, the main justification for it is that we do come into the village with the brush truck. We do use it for medical calls in the, in the village. I attached all the numbers for the last three years as to when it, what it actually came into there. And the reason that the numbers are actually a lot higher on the proposal is that we kinda switched gears a little bit. We actually went back to what John was talking about, where it would be more like a, a first response vehicle. Originally, we were talking about just doing a brush truck, but if we built it as a first responder vehicle, it, it would get a lot more use in the village as well as in the town. It would save a lot of wear and tear on the bigger trucks. It could be used. I think we ran the numbers for 2019 so far and if we built it as the first responder vehicle like we proposed, it would've gone 45 times into the village as opposed to 15. So it would definitely get a lot more use and save more on the other engines, which, as I put in this, this memo, engine three is up for replacement in the next two years. So it would, it would keep the wear down on engine four, ladder one, and make it so we don't have to run them out the door as much for some of these more basic calls such as carbon monoxide, wires down, car accidents, and it's a lot smaller truck going down the road. It's a lot easier to get people out of your way, kind of thing.
So chief, is it also functioning as a brush truck too as well?
It would be, yes.
With the way you've got it laid out?
Yeah.
So then it's, then it's 45,000 for the two municipalities? Is that correct?
On top of the 100 that would be coming.
145,000, yes, that's right.
And the town did approve the 12,500. So if we did this, would, when would engine three need to be replaced then?
2022 would still be its replacing date. You know, the first responder vehicle wouldn't replace engine three. Engine three is, you know, for structure fires is the main purpose. The volume of water you gotta put on the structure fire is a pump. You just couldn't put it on something as small as a brush truck to, to replace it. We're trying to push engine three out, but it's, you know, it's the same age as the brush truck, 22 years old. And FPA says by 2020, you know, by 25 years old, it should be replaced. And we're starting to see some of the nickel and diming maintenance-wise. Right now, the pump's out of service. I've got, got a bad pressure governor on it. That's what speeds up and slows down the pump and they don't make it anymore. So we're hoping that the manufacturer can rebuild the one that's on there. It's, you know, stuff like that.
We do have a plan to enter budget for that.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. There's, for the village's portion, 360,000 budgeted for 2022.
Yeah.
Could I just ask, what, what does a brush truck do? Obviously, you're, you're looking at this doing more than, I mean, I won't point your what a brush truck did. So what, what is this going to do again then?
Brush truck, if you built it as a brush truck, which is what the 125 of the policy asks, that would be mainly outside fires, grass fires, woodland fires. So we've used it a lot at like the great, the school prairie. You know, small outside fires where you can't get to it with an engine. It's off the road a good distance. Instead of stretching a lot of hose from an engine, it's easier to just take the brush truck right up to it, put the fire out. And with some of these med calls like ASTR or, you know, CPR calls, we're just bringing personnel. We don't really need any of the equipment off the truck. It's, it's more cost-effective to run a small pickup truck down the road as opposed to running one of our big engines down the road or just to bring a couple people to the scene and do CPR, so.
And I'm assuming this would also be used for like communication, that if it's a first responder, so that you guys can have multiple walkies in there that are communicating through, if you have a big fire, whatever.
Yeah, it could be used as a command vehicle.
Command, command center.
Yeah.
How much do you think the current brush truck is worth?
You see them up on surplus guns and surplus? They usually anywhere from 10 to 15,000 depending on the condition. I'd say ours is in a lot better condition than a lot of them that are on there, but that's probably a little bit sold through the surplus on auction site and they're gonna take a percentage of whatever the sale value of that, so.
Who buys those?
Other municipalities.
So they want an old vehicle?
Yeah.
Although it'd be a well-conditioned old vehicle, right?
Right.
So what would the financial part be then? Where, where would this money come from?
The capital fund. So it'd be cash reserves in the capital fund.
So we're looking at 20, 22, 5? And that still leaves us, just like that's still fine?
It's not ideal.
Yeah.
Because it's not planned for.
Right.
So that's, I mean, these kind of things would be nice to know more in advance. I mean, it's, it's good like with the fire engine, you know, we've been plan, planning for that for a handful of years, but this is just kind of a little tough to deal with, but we have the reserves, but it's more than we'd prefer to spend.
I think if you had to discuss it with the joint fire commission again, to reevaluate your numbers, it could be taken more, taken out of Pleasant Springs.
How, how much does their contract generate again, per year?
Roughly 62,000 with a small percentage increase year after year. Right now, that account's got roughly, we'll say 120 in it, 120,000. The next payment sometime.
By the end of the year, isn't it supposed to be around like 140? Is that what you're on?
I'm trying to pull it up right now, yeah. It seems like we left a question in there just for...
Yeah, that's what the original discussion was, it wasn't...
Uh, 140, 146 at the end of this year.
I didn't introduce him, but this is, do you have the manufacturer's route, something to answer your questions?
Welcome to the...
Yeah, my name is Joseph, I, I came from the manufacturer, we are, we are factory direct, so we don't have a distribution network, so we, we are the sole manufacturer of, of these vehicles. And I'm here specifically to answer any questions as it pertains to the apparatus capability. I believe you've all had an opportunity to see the specification from the vehicle, which could just as well be written in brief for most everybody. So I'm here to just kind of answer any of those questions and I apologize, I only have one copy, but I do have some pictures of similar vehicles that we've done in the past, if anybody would like to see.
How many communities are, are acquiring these types of vehicles? I'm assuming a lot because I could see a need for this in ours, just from what Chief said, but, uh, what you shared.
Yeah, so, you know, our typical, in, in the past, the common brush truck has been, you know, very much like what they already have, is a, is a pickup with a sliding unit in the back that carries anywhere from 150, 250 gallons of water. And as fire departments continue to progress and, and morph into, you know, their new role, which tends to be a lot more medical, they, you run into huge space requirements. Now, these vehicles, I'll just go to show you, we have very large aluminum tread plate bodies, designed to hold equipment in excess of what you'd be able to fit on a pickup. So they are, they're, they're large, they hold 400 gallons of water compared to the 250 gallons of water a standard pickup size unit. And they just, they increase your ability to carry equipment and, you know, the department can determine, you know, where are the, where's the need and what equipment can we put into this vehicle to take the load off for other vehicles and also increase the capability of that, the role that their truck can fill.
Does the water stay in it, the water, how is that?
Yeah, so the, uh, it's an aluminum body and then there's a polypropylene tank set that sits inside the body. We get those from two companies, one is UPF, one is APR. Just the, the companies who manufacture those, they have a lifetime warranty. We do all poly tanks now, they don't rust, they don't corrode, because they do sit holding water 99% of the time.
I like the idea of, of having more versatility in vehicle, if you're going to spend that much money at that point. Get something that the department can use and utilize more, that's what I thought the direction was, but then we went back to brush truck and now we're back to, you know, this new firefighter. So to me, that makes more sense, if you're going to spend that kind of money.
So given that the town has approved 12,500, would it make sense for us to approve a similar amount and then ask joint fire to reconsider how much is taken out of Pleasant Springs?
Yes, I think it's acceptable. Um, also, as far as the selling of the current brush truck, I think that that should go towards a new one. But jointly, not just the town's share. Could it go into the Pleasant Springs?
I'm wondering if we couldn't, along with approving or considering this, if we could request a consideration for a, for a new contract with the fire department and the town, because the one we have is so old and literally it talks about brush truck in there being town property. I mean, so that we can, we have a more set way of how we're going to go about getting these equipment? Could we, could we ask that, that be open for consideration?
The joint meeting probably that we're going to plan, talk about later, could be an agenda item.
Well, if we did tie...
Back to, to the fire, joint fire.
But if we tie the contract to this funding, then the town has more likelihood of coming to the table, I think. Otherwise, they don't necessarily have to do anything unless the contract is this one. I think that's what Sarah was going to say.
It's a thought, I just... The only way to get the contracts to be relooked at is if all three parties agree, the town, the village, and the fire department, so.
Buying a new piece of equipment that's not, and getting one, one that's already not with the town, then it's certainly a good opportunity to discuss it, you know, data. Because you have to have a new list anyway.
Right.
There's about four or five contracts that could be molded into one. And the one that exists now between ourselves, the town, and the volunteer fire department was written in 1987, doesn't mean it was a bad contract, but it probably deserves some...
Kind of like the brush truck?
Kind of like the brush truck.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I'm not sure which one is over, so.
Could use a new contract.
I'd be in favor of that.
So now, how is it best?
Is it best to start with the committee? Or do we want to start with the discussion of joint boards?
Can you confirm that the town approved their 12-5?
I did with Chris.
Yeah, yeah, he said they approved, so is the 12-5?
Yeah.
And what's the timeframe on when you would need the money? When you would need to know?
I think it would, I think we were talking, typically, uh, there's a year-to-year price change, price change, so every year, at the first of the year is when our suppliers typically, the price is anywhere from 1% to 3%. Typically, most of the time, you see about the 1%, so ideally, a purchase contract received before the first of the year, you would see that price savings, if it goes after the year, then the price would be, the updated price would reflect those price changes. But I understand this.
So you have a, you have expiration in quote then to fire department, right?
Uh, yeah, we kind of, if it's over a year change 100%, yeah, we'll, we'll have to reevaluate. This is for the new year model, F55 chassis, so there wouldn't necessarily be any price increase in the chassis, it would just be the components for a long time.
So to get the price that's quoted, fire department would need to sign?
Before the end of the year.
Before the end of the year.
It seemed to be reasonable. And then how long does it take to actually build this thing?
That largely depends on the chassis. If they, we receive them at a time of fashion, brush trucks usually close the production very quickly. You can see something probably close by the corner.
Okay, that's reasonable.
Where's Midwest Fire located?
Southwest Minnesota, extreme southwest Minnesota, about 20 minutes from Iowa and 20 minutes from South Dakota.
So that's where you're based out of?
What's that?
That's where you're based out of?
Yeah, so that's where, that's where I'm based out of and that's where the manufacturing facilities are.
Well, welcome to Cottage Grove.
Yeah, I was, I was really surprised, it's, it was a fun drive.
That's nice of you.
I'm a salesman, I can help.
He's a salesman, that's right. MBV to it.
The real question, is it better than Cottage Grove, Minnesota?
Yes.
AMN.
Okay, we can't compare.
Question I have is, was there other bids that were considered or is it just so specialized that we can justify some source?
I think, I think Mark and the committee went to a couple other, other manufacturers also.
Yeah.
And I think this was the one that we found best suited to what we were trying to accomplish.
I'm sure they're all the same, all part of cost wise.
I'll make a motion to fund the village portion of $12,500 for the new brush truck and redirect the joint fire department committee to reconsider using Pleasant Springs to cover the remainder of the cost.
Second. I would like to add, if you'd be up for that, the sale of the current brush truck, the funds will also be used towards the purchase of the vehicle on both of our ends, not just the town's.
How would that work with just like, are you able to sell it before delivery and payment or how does?
We, we as the fire department don't own any of the apparatus, so that would be something for the town and you guys to kind of work out, because we don't, we can't...
Put the Pleasant Springs fund?
Yeah, and what I don't want to leave is a void of a brush truck of three months, because we have a buyer, but it's not going to be delivered until quarter two.
I, I would assume what would probably have to happen is once the truck is, the new truck is delivered, there's going to be some outfit with like our radios, our kind of stuff, our equipment, it up, so we typically don't put it into service immediately after you get it, it usually takes a couple of weeks just to outfit with what we want to put on it. So I would recommend holding off on selling, selling until you kind of know an estimated date. And, I mean, you could probably put it up there with the condition that it's going to go on this date, you know?
John and, or Jeff, I mean, you could also, you can say that, that it's contingent on the sale of, of the brush truck at a, at a time that's...
I would amend my motion to say that the sale of the brush truck, the current brush truck, would go right back into Pleasant Springs, the public capital expense fund to re, to offset the, the costs of the overheads and insurance that we're pulling out now.
Okay.
All right, so I have a question then. So the new vehicle is not a brush truck, it's a first responder. So then that jointly owned, not then owned by the town, right?
That's great.
Because it's not a brush truck, because the...
The painting has been purchased, but the Pleasant Springs account has become a joint, a joint truck. So we bought, the first five years of the contract, we used that to buy engine four. That's a joint owned truck now. We used the rest, just last year, we used $200,000 in that account to buy only air packs. Because those are up, so that's, once again, a joint owned piece of equipment.
And I'm not sure that the contract even says that.
Right, so is there any inclusion of the contract revisiting or you're doing this separate?
I think the joint fire should take that up, or if the board wants to, we can have it as a joint village agenda item.
I think we can bring it up with the committee. And I agree, there's about three or four contracts that just need to be merged in one and to find some stuff that just talked about.
Yep.
But I, I personally would not like to have that contingent on a new contract to purchase a new brush truck, which is needed for the department.
No, I mean, the committee can work on it, because, you know, everything can roll off the system, get it done. It's a good problem, as long as it's a priority.
I'm going to see what we can do.
With a smile on your face.
And, and the, um, the sale of the current brush truck, since the town owns it and we can't motion what they do with their money and starts putting it back into Pleasant Springs, so that's the condition, do I understand that right?
Yes.
But we're approving our 12-5 as long as when the town sells the brush truck, it goes into the Pleasant Springs fund, do I have that correct?
That's what I'm saying right now. And the committee has to revisit it anyway, because there's additional funds needed besides the...
And that was part of your motion too, to have joint fire reconsider.
You know, we...
Pleasant Springs fund.
I'm good.
Well, exactly. As long as you keep us honest. All right, it's been motion second, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Lee Epstein, motion carries. Thank you guys for persevering.
Now that baby boy comes with a full tank of gas, right? For that kind of money, better come and throw that in.
Well, they get horrible fuel mileage too, so that's something to be careful of.
Oh, nice.
All right, the next committee is the law enforcement committee. We met on the 22nd of October. Really, the big things there, we're just talking about the, um, there was a discussion about no parking in front of a property at Oak Street. And then we received an update for the purchase, the purchase of the exercise equipment for the fitness and wellness program. And that was all approved, and then again, reports, the activities. And then had a discussion about the quick, or the quick 50 program and at the middle school, that was a, a topic that was discussed and it's right now being, uh, it's suspended because it started off and they needed to, needed to work out some quirks in it for the middle school. It works very well in high school and has for a while now. It's just a matter of getting, uh, relooking at that and I think John took some actions on there to reach out to them to get some more information.
I did. The principal, so the quick 50 program is essentially, it's a, Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, it's like a crime stopper tip line where if there's illegal activity that children know about the schools, they can anonymously report to either school resource officer or someone at the school that leads to finding some illegal items, that they would be $50. Just real quick, the principal, so there was some discussion and I reached out to the principal asking, you know, the, kind of the surrounding factors of why it was suspended, because I think Officer Jess at the school said within the first day, they had one, the second day, they had a second one. So it was quickly gaining popularity. But the principal said they have grades five through eight in the building and the wording on some of the posters was not appropriate for young students. Second point, they want to teach students to learn and do the right thing, because it was the right thing to do. Working on some, uh, some sort of phrase like see something, say something. And they want the students to be more motivated to do the right thing. And lastly, they got feedback by some of their eighth grade students, they began to talk about blame and planned on things on unsuspecting students, so that was a response I got from the principal. And it's probably, you know, future discussion with our school resource officer, because it seemed like it was popular, but we certainly don't want children to do the wrong thing, just to get hurt across.
Anything else I missed or?
Was there, so for, the people that live at 407 West Oak Street want, you know, parking signs, is that what that was?
Yes, they wanted it painted.
It's a, it's a 50 mile, you pulled it up, yeah, so it's, it's no parking across the road. It's more towards the east as well, coming out of that bend, so it just made sense and if they requested it. So if they ever sell the property and then we talked about the new owners that they want, that want parking spots, it's no longer parking, they have to have a petition, you know, act to get them to park them out.
Do a lot of people park there?
Not, not that I know of, some of them do.
But he said when they do, it makes it very hard to negotiate the curves successfully and then kids are riding their bikes up and down there and he wanted it done for safety sake.
All right. So, committee said go, go forward and do. Uh, committee development authority then, next, that was on the 23rd.
Yeah, so I'd let that one. So basically, we talked about the budget request that you heard about at the budget hearing last week. And so that was the question.
And we'll revisit that, uh, the discussion, but the meeting was revisiting mid next year to see where we're at with all the other plans going on, particularly with TITAM.
And we'll have an updated website, so we can do some new fun things with that.
No pressure, Lisa.
The one question I was asked, did someone give back to Sordis, who provided us the proposal, to let him know that we're maybe going to wait for three or six months or to reconsider next year?
Who, who asked for the proposal, who, who acquired it?
Yeah, similarly.
Yeah, it was, um, done in conjunction with the chamber.
Mary, do you want to take that one or I can, it doesn't matter.
I can do it.
Rock, paper, scissors, what do you want to do? You got it?
I can do it.
Okay. Yeah, good, good, good call. And again, it's just more of a delay, because we need to get some other things going first. Then we had ordinance review committee.
Okay, ordinance review committee met last week on the 30th and we talked about one ordinance that is out of date, doesn't line up with state statutes, it's in the packet... It's in the packet here. Lisa brought it to our attention. So the hours don't line up with the state statute. Some of them say that we could stay open longer, I believe. There's also some in there, and this is one question that ordinance review committee had was we don't start selling until later. So we're more restrictive and I'm not sure, the committee recommended to align with state statutes. But we weren't sure if there was a reason why we were more restrictive in the morning, why we can't sell until 8:00 AM instead of 6:00 AM. Just that it would be easier if we were just lined up with state statutes and changed if they changed. So I don't know if anyone has any background information on why we were more restrictive.
Chief, any thoughts on this as far as from pleasing?
We didn't even realize that the village had an ordinance that said it was supposed to close at 1:00. So I don't know where that came from and why it's that way.
There was a temperance movement at some point.
Understand?
Can businesses choose what hours, like as long as it's within the parameters? Like if the pig doesn't want to start selling until 8:00 AM?
I would think so.
Same thing with ours. Some hours tend to like the, the third shift workers that want to be here before going home. They're just on different cycles, so it's probably all about manpower and returning the test. So it's totally up to them, but like Heidi said, it's, it's more aligned with state statutes. We don't have to go back and try to figure out why we're closing at 1:00 o'clock when no one can remember what.
So I believe there's in our packet here, there's the recommended change, Lisa, is that right?
Yes.
Attached here. So that does go, just follow the state statutes then? Okay, so the committee did vote to, that we would change to follow the state statute. So I believe we are considering that tonight.
Yeah, considering is correct.
So I'll make a motion to approve the revisions to ordinance 9-16, so B and so C, closing hours for the sale of alcohol beverages.
All right, any second? Motion second, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries.
Okay, so the other ordinance that we talked about has to do with a responsible bidder. So when we enter into public contracts, we enter those with the lowest responsible bidder. So this would define responsible to make sure that we're getting the best value for our money, a product that would last a long time and be installed by workers that have, you know, whatever training or apprenticeships or proper insurance and all the things that we want to make sure that a contractor has working in our municipality. The committee talked about perhaps it might be more appropriate to make this maybe a guidance document for analyzing bids made and maybe starting with a certain threshold of a project. Because maybe smaller companies that might not meet all the criteria might be working on, or a local place might be working on a smaller project. But if we're talking about a project of a certain size or we're, we're going to discuss this some more and talk about a guidance document. So we're not meeting again until January because of the way the meetings fall. So we have a couple of months to kind of talk to staff, do research, figure out what the best way we might want to recommend something from here.
Heidi, is, are there other communities in Wisconsin that have this?
Uh, the ones I found are counties. So they're kind of bigger in general and might deal more with federal funds or road projects and such. So we're just kind of starting.
Actually Manitowoc and Superior have them.
All right, so we have, we have some places to start looking and researching and talking to staff.
So this is discussing considers that we're really, are we tabling this or until you guys?
Yeah, we, we tabled it until January to discuss, so. How do we do that here?
I'll just.
I'll make a motion to table the responsible bidder.
Yep.
Second, okay, there you go.
I'm sorry, please second it.
Sarah.
Thank you.
Any further discussion then? Having heard then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right, moving on to item 10 is reports from village officers. I had one item on here discussing consider potential dates for next choice and village town meeting. So Kim Bennigan was kind enough to send over several choices. And I think most of them start, well, some of them start in November, but I would, at this point with the holiday and everything, probably push straight to early December might be easier for everybody's calendar, maybe not. She threw out December 3rd and then we have, we tend to have, that's the first Tuesday out of December that's, tends to be popular first. And I assume we'll probably have that. So the other ones were Wednesday, the 4th, Thursday, the 5th, the following week on Tuesday, the 10th, the following week, the 11th and Wednesday. It slipped back into November, she gave the 28th, 26th and that, I just think that'll be hard to get a quorum with the holiday. Thanksgiving tend, people tend to maybe booked with families hopefully. And then November 20th and 19th. Any of those spark interest?
We'll get all those summer days.
So I was thinking about a way that we can perhaps better work on our joint interests than a formal joint meeting. I just, I feel like it might not be the most conducive way to move our best interests forward. Like waiting two months or three months to talk about a topic when we could be having a dialogue along the way that might be more productive or I guess I'm, I'm concerned that we're just holding topics or they may be holding topics to just, and then we don't get anything figured out at the meeting. But it's just, but maybe there's a better workable way that we can move forward in our joint interests. I'm, I don't know, I don't know if anyone else feels that way, but.
Well, we already have joint committees for our joint interests, so I don't know what that means.
Like with open meeting laws and like.
Yeah, we're kind of stuck.
Stuck in that forum.
But do we even need the meetings?
For me, it's like, I haven't been to a lot of them, but it feels like there's not a lot accomplished.
My opinion is just meeting and talking is more the order two years ago. And yeah, I was hoping we could accomplish more too during those meetings, but it seems like.
And maybe we need to take a better look at the agenda items and be more selective. So grab all the couple of things that maybe we can get some successes from or move things forward rather than controversy ones that no one will go anywhere in any meeting.
I don't know, the things they want to know about tend to be things that, like they can be answered without having a meeting. I mean, that are readily available if, if they contacted our staff or rather than us tell them about it. So, I mean, we could, if there are things that they want to know, could it be an item on our agenda? Like they reach out to you or to Lisa and have it on the agenda, we can discuss it and then go back to them with it. Cause it, I mean, that's kind of what tends to happen when we go to those meetings anyway, is we don't decide anything when we're there.
Yeah, but, but last time we were together, talked about the brush truck and we made a decision today.
But does that joint meeting, is that joint?
They, they brought it up as, as would we be willing to help contribute to the cost of the truck? And we said we would talk about it and they've turned it from a brush truck into a emergency response vehicle, which is probably going to help all of us more. So I wouldn't say that these meetings are unproductive in my opinion. It opens the dialogue. They're, they're waiting for you Melissa to get back to them about the landfill situation with the leaves and that kind of thing. I'm sure they'd love to talk about.
So they talked to you then, so then we don't need to have a joint meeting then because now you've discussed it, so.
Well, you're the income representative, I'm saying that you said you were working on it at the last meeting that we had.
Right. So if I haven't gotten back to them about it, they've told you that, so now you've told me, so why do we have to have a joint meeting to discuss it?
I guess I'm assuming we, we would discuss that at the next meeting.
The, but what's the point? Why do we have to have a joint meeting to discuss it is what I'm getting at.
It's just one item. I'm using.
Like road connections, I've been approached by a town supervisor that they are not totally opposed to road connections up in Fort and Fifth Ave. And I said, well, we just met two weeks ago, I would have been good to know that. Kind of just bluntly, so I mean, it, I don't know, I, I think there's movement there. Just gotta get them to make the right decision. For the, you know, the betterment of the whole community, the town and the village because road connections, it's a public safety issue, right? As another.
Aren't you having, aren't they having a public hearing on the 11th called that?
They are.
They are. That's what I'm saying.
I mean, it's not that I want to close the door on communication, but I'm just not sure if this is the best type of venue for it or the most conducive way to, and I know we have open meetings and forums that would talk to who, but you know, at, at the direction of the board, someone can talk to where if anyone has a question about anything. Or we do have joint committees that, you know, there's representatives from each community on those committees. So I just want to like, where we work together, I want it to work and not try to force it.
Another option is maybe we pick one of our meetings because we both meet on the same night. So if we decide something here and ask the village president to take this to the town meeting, maybe we offset, you know, our second meeting in a month to a, a different night that works around all the other subcommittees. And that way we're not meeting as boards at the same time on the same night.
Wouldn't that be interesting? I'll show up at a town meeting. We're here to support you.
That is an interesting idea.
So it's back to again, the discussion of whether or not we want to meet. And if we do, then a date. I think there is some, some value in it, albeit slow.
What do we have for agenda items?
The second part of this is, is, is anybody on agenda items? John threw out roads, I don't know if we want to go down that avenue again. But we don't know what the 11th will bring for them either.
I guess I would like to make a motion to table this until our next meeting so that we can hear what's decided at the public hearing with the roads.
I'll make a motion, we tabled this until our next village board meeting so we can review what happens.
Are you seconding it?
So you said, I'll, I'll second, your motion. I didn't catch your motion. I thought you said I would like to, I didn't take your motion.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
I like to override Melissa's motion.
Why don't you guys take out the part?
Yeah. There's some Roger rules working up there.
I'll second.
Or actually get off property probably better.
Okay, there's a motion second. Any further discussion then? Having heard then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Or it's table, I should say, motion carries. We're going to move down to item 13. Nobody opposes that because we have a closed session and we want to make sure Lisa hears that we've approved the bills and our vendors get paid in appropriate. So first is discuss approval of vouchers. Any questions with the voucher list?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers of $127,295.74.
Motion second, any further discussion or questions? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Correspondence is the next thing, other than the folks that shared the thoughts in the library tonight, I didn't have anything. Then we have upcoming community events. We have Christmas in the Grove coming very quickly.
Yuki tournament at the BFW at 6:30 and November 16th.
What was that again?
Yuki tournament?
I heard that part, but it was the.
The, uh, November 16th at 6:30.
Okay, thank you.
The water tower lighting. Extremely.
Yeah.
And we'll hear what historical reference JJ can come up with.
That's the thing on. And then we had Christmas in the Grove.
Yeah, Christmas in the Grove is December.
First weekend in the world.
Starts on the 5th, through the 8th.
When's the big thing that we should show up to?
Parade and tree lighting are Friday night.
Friday night for sex.
Okay, I'll turn it off.
There will be goodies at the Marketplace Center, Piggly Wiggly Shop in the Center, hot cocoa and cookies and all sorts of stuff after the parade.
What time is it, the parade?
At 7:00.
And we hope for warm weather for all those in, in the parade for watching it. Uh, future agenda items, anybody have anything?
I have had a number of residents talk to me about leaf pickups. And I, my husband sent me a picture of the leaf drop off zone and it was about 15 cars deep this weekend.
It was a mad rush because everybody's looking at.
So I'm not sure if we could discuss if, what, what do you guys think?
Discuss what?
Pickup?
You need a leaf picker upper that's $200,000.
Apparatus for the contract.
And when would it make sense to start talking about it?
Probably budget time.
Until budget time?
Public words.
Is that, now we can talk about it double first.
Plan to gather information starting early in 2020 and we'll have it committee all year long and ready for your wallet budget time. Or future agenda, do we ever get back to the school district's attorney with a written response on it?
You've gotten back to the school district's attorney, the written response would be sent this week.
We're going to get happy on that, so I'll, so Chief.
All right, can't move to 14 yet. Back to 11. Oh, I'm sorry, Lee, we missed you.
Everything good that I have to say will be done in closed session.
Okay. Now I'm here.
Ought to be good then, Lee. Huh? It ought to be good.
All right, then at this time I'll make a motion to enter a closed session. Where the village of Cottles Grove Village Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parentheses one, parentheses F, considering financial, medical, social or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of a specific personnel problems or investigation of charges against specific persons except where par B, parentheses, applies, which is discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any persons referred to such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. In this, in this case, operators license application and under a closed sessions, closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parentheses one, parentheses E, deliberating or negotiating purchase of public properties, the investing in public funds or conducting other specific public business where. other specific public business, wherever competitive or bargaining reasons, require a closed session, uh, this closed session will be negotiations in TID number 5, negotiate the terms for Cottage Grove Commons Development Agreement, and will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parentheses 1, parentheses C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, in this case, the administrator's evaluation.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I, I motioned it, so nobody did it. I had to re-say that again.
Second.
At this table down here, we're just not getting it. We want to apologize.
All right, roll call, please.
Alan?
Aye.
Limberg?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Raxler?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye. You got that part, guys?
You don't want to read that one twice.